All right, for the little delay, we did go down and watch Olivia Clarkson's senior night presentation. So sorry we're a little bit late, but welcome to the Oxford Public Schools School Committee Meeting of Monday, February 14th, 2022. Please note face coverings and masks are required in all school buildings until further notice. Regular school committee meetings are videotaped by Oxford Cable Access and broadcast live on the town's public access educational channel 194 only. Video recordings may be viewed subsequent to the live broadcast via the town's YouTube channel, which may be accessed from either the town of Oxford website or the Oxford Public Schools website. So, thank you. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. Comments are limited to topics relating to school business. Speakers must identify themselves by name and address and will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes, although the school committee may hear comments on unanticipated topics. Discussion or action on topics not specifically listed on the agenda will be postponed. So at this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If you have any comments, please come forward. You can sit at the table.
Hi.
Hi. Pam Rice. I have two daughters in the school.
Okay. Hi Pam.
Okay, so my concern is something that I mentioned in that coffee and conversation time.
Okay.
The bathrooms are still being locked. So bathrooms are not accessible to the kids at lunchtime, before school, the only one that's accessible is the nurses, and after school. There's no accessibility to bathrooms. They're still gated and locked. And I still think that that is wrong. I did call the principal. I spoke to him. Basically, I was told they're not opening those bathrooms. This past week, last week, my daughter had to wait in line with six other students to use a restroom because a four-stall bathroom was only being allowed one student at a time. With a teacher watching right there, right outside the door. They still wouldn't let them in to use the bathroom, one at a time. So her and her friend said, Mom, it was pretty bad when we're basically doing the pee-pee dance in the hallway because we can't get access to a bathroom. My other daughter, at one point, needed to use the bathroom. She was told to use the teacher's bathroom. She said, Mom, it smells like marijuana. She said, so even though they're letting us use the teacher's bathroom, other students are going in there and using it for recreation. And she said it smelled. She told Mr. Truax, and still, the bathrooms are not being opened. And I don't understand why that they can't have access to bathrooms. If, and I forget his name, but if the dean of students can stand outside the locked bathrooms to make sure nobody goes or tries to get in them, why can't he stand there and watch the students go in and out? If he's going to guard a gated bathroom, he should be guarding a bathroom that allows kids to use it. They shouldn't have to float all the way around from one end of a building to another to use a bathroom when there's one right there. And that's my issue.
All right, thank you very much. I know, you know, that's an unanticipated topic, so, you know, we don't really need to respond to that, right, through the superintendent at this point?
Yeah.
I do know that you came out to the public forum two Saturdays ago. We appreciate that. I know the super was going to follow up, so, you know, obviously after hearing you, you know, we can see where he's at at some point, but I don't want to make-
Which was interesting because my daughter said, Mom, this super came to the school. She goes, guess when the bathrooms are unlocked during the super's visit?
Mr. Nugent, I did discuss it on Friday. I expressed your opinions to it. We did discuss it on Friday, and we're talking about putting together a communication that explains what's happening with the bathrooms. So you should receive something later this week.
So an explanation doesn't give them access?
It may give them more access at times, yes.
Okay. Know that I will never, ever allow anybody to discipline my child if she leaves school to come home to use the bathroom. And that's what I told the principal. My daughters have my permission to walk out of school, go home, use the bathroom, and come back. Because if they can't go to the bathroom here, we live right up the hill, they can come use it. And they will never have to suffer any discipline from anybody for doing it. Because if you're not going to provide for their basic needs, I will make sure.
We certainly appreciate your bringing this forward again, Mrs. Rice. I know for me personally, as a school committee member, I will anxiously await to see the letter that comes out. And, you know, obviously, we will, you know, as board members, be able to reach out to the superintendent individually if we do have concerns as far as to what the reasoning is. So we certainly appreciate you coming out.
I also think I'd like to know how many other parents would like to know this. Because how many other parents don't know that these bathrooms are being locked?
I mean, I think the correspondence that comes out will certainly enlighten people that may not know, but we certainly appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you. Do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Seeing and hearing, nobody else at this point, we will close public comment for now. We do have public comment at the end as well. And at this point, we do have some special presentations, so I would ask Ms. Bellhumer and Mr. Nugent if you both want to come up and give your presentations.
Hello.
Hello.
Happy Valentine's Day. So I know that you already received my newsletter for February for the winter. We have a lot of great things, I think, happening from curriculum to extracurricular going on this year that so much more than what we could offer last year, which is wonderful for the students. Few highlights, and this is posted on my webpage for any parent at home that hasn't seen it yet. I want to thank Mrs. Walia for working to get our hydroponic garden for her classroom. I'm really excited about this. They came and put it together with her a couple weeks ago, and the students were working on putting plants in it. And this in addition to our outdoor greenhouse that we've been utilizing that was left from Project Coffee. I think I'm really excited to see what the students are able to do with this. So I'll definitely update you again in the spring with what is going on with us. Maybe they can come and do some sort of presentation on it. Grade five, Mrs. Pierce's class is rocking kindness months. Every month, they're doing something different. Last month, they sent cards, holiday cards, over 170 to Life Care Center, and it was a little heartwarming because we ended up getting a card in the mail from a former teacher whose husband was there who received one of our cards. And just hearing that she was so touched by that, the students were really excited by that, and so was Mrs. Pierce. So, and we had no idea that that was the case. So that was nice for them to see how their actions impacted somebody else that they didn't even know was really great for those students to see. So every month, Mrs. Pierce is trying to do something different with them, which I think is pretty awesome. And collectively, as a fifth grade, they're going to start some sort of kindness club. We had a couple of students that wanted to start a kindness club. That's not in here. It happened after the fact. So they'll be working on that with Mrs. Scholl. So we have a lot of good things going on in grade five. Basketball season's wrapping up. I am, you know, glad to see that we were able to have basketball this year. Everything went pretty smoothly. This is the last week. We have a couple of home games this week if anybody wants to check them out. We'll be kicking off our esports team after February break, so we're excited about that. Ms. Niskern's working on that. And I would just like to remind parents that I send out a parent email just about every week that updates them on everything from fundraisers to when the school stores open to activities and clubs. So be sure to check and read that email because it has a lot of information in there so you know what's going on with your kids and what they can join and be a part of. So, that's it.
Any questions from the committee members?
I love this. I thought this was fantastic. Before I even saw it coming, I had on my mind to request something like this, and then it just appeared. So you guys are fantastic. Thank you for showing off, showcasing all the great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Burke? Just a comment, and I think after seeing both Amy and Dave's, we talk about the importance of kids feeling connected to their schools. And I think looking at how diverse the activities are that you have here between gardening and esports, and there's math and science, there's, what else did I say? Magic Club, and I think you've just, you've got stuff for everybody. And so hopefully, kids can get involved, get connected, and have a reason to come to school if they're not particularly academically inclined, which some of them are, right? So, thank you.
That's a great point, Mr. Burke. Thank you, Ms. Bellhumer. Mr. Nugent?
Okay, so you have in front of you the winter edition of the Pirate's Post, building off a very exciting fall sports season, our winter sports. We worked really, really hard this year. A lot of people worked hard behind the scenes. I'd like to thank our nurses, Amy Grenette and Ashley Meshke, and then the middle school nurse, Abby Packard, Mr. Kevin May, and all our coaches. We really worked hard to make sure that the season could go on. You know, we had to signline a few individual players due to COVID, and then, you know, shut down a couple of teams just during the week for practices, but, you know, the season kept rolling. I'm proud to say that we did not have to limit any fans coming to the games, to the home games. We did shut down the concession stands for a little bit, sorry Booster Club, but if you can't smell it now, go out there. The Booster Club popcorn is filling the hallways now. Some highlights about winter sports, girls' basketball. I know, you know, they have a good shot of winning tonight, and outside, a chance of winning their last two games, but they could very well make it to the districts, which would be very, very exciting. And our girls' indoor track team, they were highlighted in a Telegram Gazette article. I shared the link on that. And also, they won the Swickelby regular season title for the first time in team history, which is very exciting. Even though Omicron slowed us down a little bit, NJHS and NHS, and the junior NHS, still participated in some fundraising. And also, Student Council hosted a very spirited holiday week right before the winter break. Our AP students are working hard. With our relationship with the MIE, we have the opportunity for our students who are taking AP English, AP Math, and AP Science to work with other AP students from around the area on Saturdays. And they also take a mock exam, which is corrected by the MIE, and that information, you know, informs teaching and learning. So that's pretty exciting. We're able to have in-person, some members are from our alumni panel, come back to talk to the class of 2022 to share their experiences after high school. On the first addition, I shared the first college acceptance list. You can see that it has grown, so very, very proud of all of our seniors and our guidance for working and getting those applications in. In addition to having our alumni back in person, we were able to host our band winter concert and our chorus winter concert, you know, with a live audience. We still streamed it, but it was very exciting to hear those guys live and hear the clapping afterwards. Jolly old St. Nicholas came and visited our project success. Project success has been really, really working hard. I know Mr. Lucas had tweeted something out, and I'm going to include that tweet in the next session of the Pirate's Post. And I want to have a big welcome to Mr. Justin Richards in his role as our dean of students for the remainder of this school year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Burke? Thanks, Dave. I mentioned a few months back, and I don't even know if you were at that meeting, Dave, but just curious as to what kind of things we're doing to support arts in the building, especially music. Not that I don't think you guys are supportive, but I think we see those numbers dwindling, and I'm curious if it's student apathy, or if there's something you need from us, or what we can do to build those programs back up.
I think we have a plan moving forward to make sure that we introduce our high school band and chorus to the middle school next year. But, I mean, we were at, again, we tweeted it out, and it will be on the next addition, but our band did perform at the Railers game on Saturday night.
I was there.
Along with our NJROTC. They did a great job.
Yeah.
So, yes, I think we need to market it, and, you know, in talking to Mr. Lucas, we're looking at maybe an introductory band program.
Okay.
And we did try it, but they really, we did offer it in the program of studies, but not really much people.
Okay.
But I'm thinking as, I don't want to say masks are gone, but I'm thinking as we continue to come out of the pandemic, I think more people are going to feel comfortable. We're still sending students to districts for chorus, for districts for band.
Yep, well, absolutely.
You know, and we're having some high success.
No, and I think that's what I noted to my daughter after they played at the Railers is you can tell, I mean, unfortunately, it's 12 kids, but the 12 kids really want to be a part, and they sounded awesome. They're just, they're good.
Absolutely, they did. They did. And I sent the video out, but I messed up the phone, so it was sideways, but you can still hear it. And Mrs. Looney, now they're done with rehearsals, and now on full-fledged practice for the Spring Musical.
Yes.
And we do have some middle school participants coming and helping out.
Awesome. Yeah, I know that.
I think with the band, too, is that the middle school had a little bump there for a year and a half where they didn't have a lot of band going on. So we're just going to try to build our interest back up, and that will probably help feed into the high school once we are back in full swing with that, too.
Yeah.
So we have quite a few kids doing band this year that hopefully will translate over the next couple of years and then go from there. So I think that'll help.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Nugent. Thank you both. Appreciate you coming in. All right, Ms. Molly Raymond, student representative.
The GSA is voting to move plans to name underclass, which is decided right after February 30th. So I should have that for our next meeting. The NHS and NBAJ has their introduction on April 28th, and we have to pass their goal of blessing safety blanket. We are thankful for the Oxford community supporting this. The PoliJSTAN had a lot of fun performing America the Beautiful at the Boston Railers game this past weekend, and the NJROTC marched up the game as well. The senior class had a hand-me-down fundraiser for this past week with two more on the way, one meeting by a grade and another with Kilo Farms. The juniors are collecting shoes from the community as a fundraiser. The Student Council is hosting a winter carnival spirit week this week. Today was Country versus Family Club Day with a Mario Kart tournament after school. Tomorrow is Arctic versus Tropical Day with a Just Dance tournament after school. Wednesday is Soccer Mom versus Girl Dad Day with a least board tournament after school. Thursday is a teacher versus students swap with teacher Brown and you. And Friday is class colors, a green, purple, freshman, blue, sophomores, orange, juniors are black, and seniors are red. And lastly, shout out to senior Olivia Clarkson on the girls' basketball team as they play North Park Field tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Raymond?
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly. We do have a couple of meeting minutes to approve. The January 24th regular meeting and the February 5th, 2022 special meeting. So I would like to take each of these separately. So the 24th, we have-
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Discussion. All right, I do have a concern. So I don't know if I'm going to request that it gets adjusted, or I just make it a public note, but it says, as a follow-up to Chairman Cronarchioli's request at the last school committee meeting, Union President Kim Davis indicates that she's available to answer any questions. I asked her a few times to say that we didn't want to do that publicly, so it's not really captured in there. So I don't know if I want to have it rewritten, or if I can just make a public comment that that should-
Can we add that in?
So can we still approve that with the addition of that?
Absolutely.
All right, so could somebody just-
Yeah, so amend the motion.
Resend the motion?
Resend, basically.
Resend it or just amend it?
Well, just, if you want to amend it, that'd be great.
To amend the motion to include Dave's suggestions in these minutes?
I second the amendment.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing, I call for the vote. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Amendment, yes. We also have the minutes of February 5th, the special Saturday meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Amendment, yes, as well.
Dave, can I make a note, sorry?
Yeah.
Just a point. I should have abstained from that first vote. I was not at the meeting.
Uh-oh. You were there.
Okay, we're going to rescind that vote.
The 24th.
The last school committee meeting, I was not here.
We change? Do I have to do the vote again, or can we just change?
You don't have to. If you're not at a meeting, you can still vote if you're comfortable doing so.
Oh, okay.
It's perfectly legal to vote if you're not at a meeting.
You okay with it?
That's fine. Leave it alone. Just want to make sure I'm doing it right.
All right, off to the superintendent's report. Face coverings in school, update and policy review. So, Mr. Lucas?
Thank you. You guys have copies in your packet of the update from the commissioner and policy EBCFA for face coverings. I did ask Nurse Grenette to come up and meet with us today to answer any possible questions. Amy, if you could come up to the table, that'd be great. I just want to, we did a survey for staff. I'll share the results of that in a minute with you folks. If we were to rescind the mask mandate, which is what the governor and commissioner announced on February 9th, masks would then be optional in schools, but the following would still apply. Per federal mandates, masks would still be mandatory on all of our buses and student transportation. Masks would still be mandatory in the nursing suites. Masks would still be mandatory for five days after you return from a COVID quarantine. Weekly testing is still recommended, and free test kits are available. Anybody who has cold or flu symptoms is advised, recommended to wear a mask. We'll continue to monitor our own cases of COVID infection to make decisions that will promote the well-being of our staff and students. We'll continue to promote safe hydrant practices with our students with disinfectant and things like that. KN95 masks are available in all of our schools, and nurses have those. And we're going to still continue with our testing program through April 22nd, and any folks who are not part of that and still want to be can contact the nurses, and they will sign you up for that. Some of the results of the survey, we had, we had 1,279 responses. Overall, 77.9% of the respondents allowed, said yes, allow masks to be optional in schools. 22% said no. When we break it down by students, 80.5% of students would like to see masks become optional. 19.5% would like to see the mask mandate continue. When we break it down by staff, 68.4% would like to see masks become optional. 31.6% would like to see the mask mandate stay in place. When we break it down by parents and caregivers, 79.9% would like to see masks become optional, and 20.1% would like to see the mask mandate stay in place. I have some questions here that folks in the community asked, and just through discussion over the past week since that was announced. Amy, where, I'd like to ask Amy to answer, and then we'll have a discussion. You guys can ask Amy anything else you want to ask. Where are we with positive test results at this time of year compared to last year at this time?
So we have, right now, two active cases in the district. Last year, at this time, we were at five active cases.
What is the professional opinion of the Board of Health, the head nurse, your nursing group, your team, about the removal of masks?
So I start with myself as the head nurse. I am fully in support of lifting the mask mandate as of the 28th of February. The nurses met this weekend and had a discussion, and the majority also was in support of this. I had reached out to the Director of Public Health Services, Rika Sterrett, and the Board of Health Chair, Carrie Singer. They recommended that we follow DESI guidelines, and they, they say, you know, we can revisit it or reevaluate if we see an uptick in, increase in numbers. And tonight, we just got, the town got notification that all, as of the February 28th, all public buildings will have the mask mandate lifted as well.
All right, thank you. How are we going to proceed with students who come back from COVID positive or quarantine? Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so that's where a lot of the discussion was, when the nurses kind of putting our heads together, how that's going to work. At the end of the day, DESI, I'm sorry, CDC and DPH, it's still, you know, wear a mask five days upon returning. You know, in speaking with Mr. Lucas, you know, five would be the most. So sometimes the weekend plays in there where you're only wearing a mask for a couple days. We would have that discussion with the student, with the parent, you know, this is, you know, what the mandate is now, our policy is now. As far as policing that, you know, that would just have to be an expectation that they followed that.
All right, thank you. And we saw this in the survey, in the comments also from the survey. Folks mentioned that it wouldn't be prudent to wait a couple of weeks after February vacation to lift the mask mandate, just in case there is an uptake in the vacation week that we saw in previous things like Christmas and stuff like that.
Right.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Right. So last year, with the two weeks following February vacation, there were four positive cases. So that wasn't really concerning when you look at that. Now, I know last year to this year is different because we're talking about two different variants. But given the amount of natural immunity that our community has, because most of them, a great deal of them have had it, and also the vaccinated, I think there's a very relatively low chance of an uptick that would be concerning after February break. There is the travel, you know, the chance of people traveling out of state or country. And for that reason, we'll continue our travel policy. That will still stay in place.
Okay, thank you. So our recommendation is to follow the DESI guidance and make masks optional from February 28th on. So that's kind of the information we have. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, board members, questions? Ms. Griffin, Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah, just to speak to the travel policy that's in place. So you mentioned it. What is the policy again?
So our travel policy is anyone that travels internationally, whether you're vaccinated or not, must show proof of a negative test once they're back in the country. And for travel out of state, it's for five days or more. If you're unvaccinated, you'd need to show proof of a negative test, PCR or antigen. And the reason why we did the four nights, five days, is because we didn't really want to unnecessarily inconvenience, you know, families if they went to New Hampshire to visit grandma for a long weekend. Every time they leave the state, they'd have to come back and get a test. And when we put the policy in place, tests were much harder to come by.
And how have we been following up on those travel policies, like-
So we depend, we depend on families to let us know when they're traveling, or if they're traveling. Sometimes it's, you know, a student talking about Disney and how much fun they had, and then all of a sudden, the teacher's like, did you know they were in Disney? So, you know, but it's, we're really depending, you know, we're just kind of working with families, students as a team. It's not, it's just we're all working together on it. And we've been pretty lucky as a district. We have good families, and everyone's doing what they can.
So speaking about travel, another question that comes to my mind is that we've approved some overnight travel that's going to happen with NJROTC, and I'm thinking about other trips that are ways away. Some school districts are talking right now about having a policy that's in place for masking when students travel, especially since CDC and, you know, the other guidelines that are still out there that are much different outside of our state.
Right.
So do we have to adhere to the guidelines outside of the state, or do we get to just carry the no masks for students once they leave Massachusetts? They can continue doing what Oxford Public School-
Right. Well, I mean, they really have to follow the policy of wherever they go to.
Okay.
You know, because I don't, another state won't say, well, you don't, you know, if your school doesn't make you, you know, but I think really if they're traveling outside of Massachusetts, they have to follow the policy there. And, you know, we're not going to say, or I don't know if it would benefit us to say, you know, you have to, you have to wear a mask if you travel outside. If you don't have to wear it here, it's expected that they wouldn't have to wear it on a school sanctioned trip.
Even if they were traveling?
Yeah, I would say we, I think most, if they're traveling, I don't think anyone's going by air anywhere. Are they flying anywhere? No.
I know that our kids are going over, like, outside of the state, right?
Right, but public transportation, that is, they have to wear a mask.
Right.
But other than that, I don't, I don't, my recommendation is not to- Yeah, I would say we, we, I think most, if they're traveling, I don't think anyone's going by air anywhere. Are they flying anywhere? No?
I know that our kids are going over like outside of the state, right?
Right, but public transportation, that is, they have to wear a mask.
Right.
But other than that, I don't, I don't, my recommendation is not to say if you travel, you need to wear a mask. I think you need to follow the state that you're traveling to.
They would have to follow wherever the trip's destination was and follow their, wherever their mask policy is at that time.
And it's understanding, you know, some, some places they may go to are very loose with the, you know, the mandates. But if they're not wearing a mask here, for us to say you have to wear a mask in a state that's even less strict, it might be unreasonable.
I was just thinking if it was the opposite, then they would just have to adhere to that state's requirement.
Yeah. I, I think Massachusetts is one of the most strict. So, I don't know that they're going to be traveling anywhere that's, that's more strict.
I think we're the only two states right now that are lifting masks presently though, Massachusetts and another for students as of February 28th. So, that's one thing that, you know.
Well, remember, it's not lifting, it's making it optional.
Right, making it optional.
Lifting the mandate, but they're making it optional.
Correct. But that means they're, they're getting rid of that. It goes back to the school district to make the decision. You know, I'm just kind of interested in hearing your professional opinion and trying to really understand it.
Right.
Because you spoke to the data from last week, but the data from the week before was much higher for our student statistics, and the data of the week before was even higher. And so, it is trending down. But I, I don't think it comes to anybody's surprise that I'm probably more conservative, you know, parent of five. But I know how, I know how, I know how germs spread when you have five kids that live in your house.
Right.
And I also know, you know, we have kids at younger levels in our district. And one thing that I asked, I did request the survey, and I was so happy to see it and very grateful that, that request was.
Yeah, I was happy about that survey.
Was, you know, honored and the survey came out. The only thing that I questioned was, I didn't really know from the data because it wasn't aggregated this way, was who responded from our elementary schools, who responded from our middle and our high school? It's very hard for me to see, you know, if there are concerns with constituents that have younger children.
Well, there was a comment section.
Oh, I did see that.
Yep, there was, so in, as we were reading through the comments, they, no one really specified which school. And, and the whole idea of being anonymous survey, we didn't want to ask too many questions. You know, it's, we're not trying to kind of pin down who's saying what, but mostly just staff, student and parent were the big ones that we wanted to capture.
And again, as some, a member that requested it, I think it would be very, you'd be very able to put a section in there that says, "I'd like to stay anonymous" and you don't have to name your school. So, I think that there's ways to aggregate data and code where you can be more forthcoming. And if people do want to, you know, be a little bit more clear, they can. Again, when I make a decision like this, I kind of, I really want to know. And my, I'm trying to make it for all students of Oxford.
Right, of course.
It's very difficult.
Well, right now, you have 78% saying.
Right.
Oh, I know.
They are optional. So, even if you broke it down.
I was also impressed with the number of students that took the, because they, they ignore emails left and right.
Well, they were part of that school, which was awesome.
Yeah, I, I was impressed and, you know, when I went to bed last night, I saw our number and I was like, "Come on, kids. Come on, parents, answer this." And then I woke up and it was, you know, 1,200 or whatever. It was, it was good.
Yep.
It was good.
All right, other questions for Mrs. Grenette? Yes, Ms. Cook?
You spoke to transportation, but will they be required to wear masks like on the bus?
Yes. Yep, yep. That's, that's, DESI kept the, the transportation, the bus transportation.
Because the feds have to decide that that's over.
Right, right. That's, that's not really.
Federal level decision.
Yeah, that's not our, our decision.
Other questions?
I have one more that comes to my mind. So, you said if there was a spike, what would you determine to be a spike?
So, a spike, what, what happened after Christmas was a spike. That was, you know, is, is an uptick is what, what I'm expecting. And an uptick is when you're seeing a few, like a cluster would be three or more in a certain area. So, if you had, and, and this is what I spoke to Mr. Lucas about, we, we can say, you know, look at, there's three kids in the kindergarten class that are positive. Why don't we, why don't we have them wear masks for the rest of the week or for a week? You know, and that's, that's really, you know, something that we should have the discretion if there's, but, you know, if one kid, two kids, I don't know that we need to hurry up and throw a mask on them every time. You know, if, if we don't see that, it's, it's kind of running through the classroom.
So, I think that's, that's great guidance, but I would think that we would need to have a policy in place that states very specifically, so parents are very well aware, you don't want to surprise anybody. What is the definition of an uptick? What is the definition of a spike? What would require their child to then wear a mask or not? Because I, again, I want to be as transparent as possible to our community. I don't want it to be wishy-washy. That's why we have policies in place.
The problem with putting that in writing, say, like, okay, this is what we have to do, is because sometimes you'll have somebody that had, is positive. And then four days later, you find out another person is positive. Now, we're overlapping. And when we, we really try to be, when, when we talk about COVID cases, we try to say active cases. Because sometimes, you know, a, a coach or a teacher or someone will say, you know, "There's so many positive kids in my class." No, there have been over a certain amount of time, but there's not active cases. So, for, for us to say if there's two or more positive cases in a class of 15 or less, then, you know, it's kind of a little bit of math and it's a lot of, it's, it might be a lot of work for a little, for a little reward, I think. I, I think we'd be masking them unnecessarily.
Well, just to, just to, and Mr. Burke has a comment, but I'm, also I'll defer to him and then I'll jump on that point. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Amy, sorry, just something you said that concerned me a little bit. So, if we were to, to vote here tonight to rescind that, that policy and not require the masks, but have them optional.
Right.
You made a comment about if you see a, a cluster in a classroom.
Right.
You would then say that classroom is going to mask. I would say, no. I maybe communicate to families, "Hey, we have an uptick in this class and you may want to decide."
Yeah.
But I think what we're saying here tonight, sorry, what I'll be saying here tonight is,
Right.
it's time to put the decision in the parents' hands. So, if as a parent, if I get a letter saying, "Hey, there's five, six kids in your classroom who have now tested positive," I can then say, "Hey, wear a mask tomorrow," or I can say, "I'm not worried about you. You're fine."
Really, the, the, the communication with the Board of Health and Director of Public Health was, you know, they support that, the lifting that mask mandate with the, you know, the idea that if there is all of a sudden this, you know, more of an outbreak, then, you know, you can revisit, reevaluate and say, "We might need to mask for a couple of weeks or a week or."
I just wanted to make sure we weren't saying that.
Well, no.
The principals or the superintendent are going to be able to say, "Hey, we got this class that has a little outbreak. They're masking tomorrow." Right. That, that was going to be my point, because you, you said that, but then you steered it back.
Right.
Because when Powell was asking you about it, then you started steering back. Because you did say if there was a two or three kids, then we could have them mask. I think our job tonight, and there is a policy that MS, MS.
MASC.
MASC came out with, that I can read shortly. There is maybe one or two things I'd like to strike out of it. But I'll defer to Mrs. Forbes for if she had her hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Burke said too. I feel that once we make a decision, and speaking to Mrs. Griffin's point, we don't want to be wishy-washy. I feel like making that exception, the what-if is what's going to cause us to be wishy-washy.
Right.
I feel the same way. If we make a decision, we're putting it in the hands of the parents regardless of whether there is one or three and the overlap thing. And then the testing positive after you've had COVID is another issue that makes it look maybe like numbers are higher. Your symptoms are gone, you're technically better, but you can still, you know, test PCR even and be positive.
We, we won't be testing positive students, testing them out of a quarantine or in isolation because it's not recommended they test. But as far as asking a student to mask up for if there is, you know, we don't have to do that. That's something that you would, if you make that decision. But we could, or we should say, "Look at, there's been three or more in, in the classroom in the last five days and that's, that could be up to them."
I think.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I support that.
So, can I, I, I don't know, has, have all the members that just, this, this guidance just came out a few hours ago. Has everyone had a chance to see the face covering guidance that has come out? It's in our email. I can read it?
Please do.
So, it says, "The blank," and you can put your district in. So, I'll just add it us for now. "The Oxford Public School District is committed to providing a safe environment in schools during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Maintaining a safe environment is critical to the district's ability to ensure students remain in a full-time classroom learning environment." And if anybody doesn't have it, the superintendent could send it, because I sent it to him. Can you just email it to all the members?
Well, can you also, do we already have this or no?
It came in my email today.
Can you tell me the title upset?
Yeah, I didn't get it today.
I don't think I got it either, Dave.
I didn't get it. I'll email it to you guys right now.
He's going to email it. I, I don't know why I was the only one, but.
Was it from DESI?
It was from MASC giving you guidance. Came at 3:29 today.
Mass Association of School Committee.
So, um, let me just get back to it. "Maintaining a safe environment is critical to the district's ability to ensure students remain in a full-time classroom learning environment. According to public health experts, one of the best ways to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our community safe is to use, through the use of face masks or face covering. Therefore, in accordance with the guidance and recommendations for the care for the Center of, for the CDC, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, the Massachusetts Department of Health, the following requirements are in place until further notice." So, it's talking about, the first one is a face covering that covers the nose and mouth is strongly recommended to be worn by individuals who remain unvaccinated or are otherwise immune compromised in a school building and/or on school grounds, even when social distancing is observed. That's basically giving a recommendation. Then it says, "Individuals who are vaccinated are not required to wear a mask, but may do so if desired." For me, I would make a, if we discuss this, I would like to strike that out. But I would like to add the, a first bullet that effective February 28th to 2022, the Oxford Public Schools are making masks optional for all in the district, something to that effect. And then it states the three areas that we've already talked about in bold. Students and staff returning from a five-day quarantine after a positive COVID test must follow strict mask use other than when they're eating and drinking or outside and conduct active monitoring for their symptoms through the 10-day. Mrs. Grenette talked about that. Mask will be required in all health, school, school health offices. And then federal, based on the federal public order, all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school buses. So, the only thing that kind of, I guess when we make it optional, that would be the only thing I would put in there. So, I don't know if people have had a chance to look at it. The only thing, again, I would say we strike out is the individuals who are vaccinated. Get that out and add a bullet above a face covering that says effective, you know, Monday, February 28th, 2022, the Oxford Public Schools are adhering to the state's guidance or are just making masks optional for all.
Are you making a motion? Is that a motion?
No, I'm just, I'm reading what it was, but that will be a motion that I would like to make. Yes. Questions or comments?
I have a question. I think maybe this is for you, Amy. The piece about student staff returning from a five-day quarantine. Can you explain the rationale if they're returning from the five-day quarantine, they're, we're considering them safe to return?
Right.
So, what is the mask doing?
With masks.
So, yeah.
Well, I'm asking what the mask is doing.
Right, he's asking why, why a mask.
They've been determined safe to return. Why are they any more of a threat than the rest of the kids running around?
Because there is, I, I guess there's concern about the infectious period. And when they are returning from a five-day quarantine, that's symptom-free or a significant improvement in symptoms. And that is, you know, opinion of how, well, I know that we have students that, or in staff, that after five days, they can't come back. So, I think the idea that CDC, DTH is, they're kind of making sure that they're, the infectious period is over.
And I want to appreciate for everybody the fact that you're, you're doing your best to interpret what they're, they're putting out, that you didn't put this out.
Oh, yes. No, I.
I understand that that's, that's not you saying that.
I have to translate things sometimes that don't make sense to me and, and try to.
But that, that language is straight from the state. That's the.
Correct. I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding of why we're, and not Amy again, but why it's being said that these kids are okay to return to school, but they have to wear a mask. If there's an infectious period, then why are they okay to return to school?
Well, if it's symptom-free, you could, but I think they're probably referring to potential asymptomatic or infectious period is what you said.
Right, infectious period is, and, and, you know, you can be infectious with or without symptoms. So, it's not, and by the time.
Remember, the original was a 10-day. They cut it to five.
I understand.
They cut that right in half. And I think the, would be caveat that you had to wear a mask for five days.
Yes.
So, I know a lot of districts are in the works. They're still trying to work this out.
Yep.
If you can imagine, we only heard about this not even a week ago.
Right.
And some districts are discussing that students can come back, but they have to have a negative. It's not a PCR test. It's one of the tests that we sent home.
It's an antigen, yeah.
Because they, the antigen tests test differently and students can still register as positive on those
Right.
because they're shedding the virus. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's my understanding from the medical professionals that I've spoken to. But the PCR tests, we all know can have those false, false negatives for a very long time.
Right.
But the antigen tests, again, correct me if I'm wrong, cannot do that if a student is no longer shedding the virus, correct?
So, the, the antigen test, you can, you can still be outside of your infectious period
Yep.
and still test positive on the antigen test. So.
Could I, just before you continue, I, I'd like to steer this conversation back. This conversation's about masks.
But here's my point.
Not about testing. It's not about positive. This is about masks. So, we really need to focus on that.
With all due respect, Mr. Conackioli, it's also about potentially amending our policy for masks. And if we're going to lift masks for students that come back that have had COVID and there's a question that they can just kind of walk in and nobody's going to necessarily enforce it after five days. They're, they're coming in here and I'm, and again, correct me if I'm mistaken, but it kind of sounds like I'm getting the gist from three other members. I haven't heard from Molly, that a student can come back, have an infection, and they're supposed to have their mask on for another five days, up to the 10 days, but I don't know who's going to police it. And again, some other districts are taking the, one more precaution, that the student has to have one more negative antigen test in addition to masking for the five days to ensure that that student is not contagious to other peers that are in the classroom who are unmasked. Now, again, I've been researching this heavily. I haven't really rested. I've been talking to one person after another in multiple districts. I don't want to rush anything. And I did make the recommendation to the superintendent, and I believe you as well, Mr. Conackioli, that we could discuss this. We could look at what other school committees' policies are coming out and how they're amending them, what they're doing for other mitigation protocols and be thoughtful and reflective. And then we are meeting again on Monday, February 28th, and we can, you know, state to the public exactly what we feel extremely confident on. I get, again, I'm only one voice at the table.
So, if you would like, you can make a motion to extend, you can make a motion to postpone the vote. But if not, we need to continue to move forward.
And I.
Because we can sit and debate back and forth, but we really need to take an step. So, if you want to make a motion to postpone until the 28th, you could do that. And then if we have a second, then we can go from there.
So, if I do make that motion, again, I don't want to just make a motion, stop the discussion because I think the discussion is the important part of this.
You can make a motion to postpone the vote tonight.
I'm happy to make the motion to postpone the vote tonight, but I also don't want to be cut off if I make that motion and the rest of the members decide that they, they just want to vote what they want to vote.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll have a little bit more discussion, but at some point, we need to move forward.
I get it. We've, you know, we've spoken maybe for 15 minutes about this. I know for some people in our community, and I know it's only probably 30%, they're very concerned. And they also want to have their children go here. And we are representing constituents that have
Agreed.
children that have asthma, children that have immune compromise disorders.
Agreed.
And we also have faculty that might be in that same room.
So, again, Ms. Griffin, do you, if you want to make a motion to postpone the vote tonight. So again, Ms. Griffin, do you, if you want to make a motion to postpone the vote tonight, you can do that. If not, we can continue the discussion and then we need to move forward with a motion to, you know.
If I can help you there, pal. I think what you're hoping is we continue the discussion. So if I can suggest to you, we continue the discussion. At the end of the discussion, you can still make that motion to postpone the vote.
And I'm happy to make it now.
Yeah, I would make it now so we know where we're heading. I think that, I agree, Mr. Burke. We could do that, but.
And I, you know, I was trying to give you folks some more information, but I'm sure you all did a lot of research too and reached out to a lot of schools and spoke to a lot of other board of healths like I have and other nurses and medical professionals. You know, I have data from multiple resources and I don't want to make a light decision. I also think.
So are we still, are we going to, are we just continuing discussion or do you want to make a motion?
I'm fine to make a motion because I feel like.
So why don't we make that? And if that moves forward, then we can continue talking.
And if it doesn't.
We'll continue talking. Yeah?
And are you going to revisit the motion if it doesn't move?
The motion that you're going to make?
I'll just make the.
Well, go ahead. Make your, if you want to make a motion.
I don't. I feel like I'm getting forced to be making the motion now.
I think it makes the most sense for you to make that motion at the end of the discussion if you feel like.
Um, you know what?
You know what I mean?
If I can say, doesn't it work that you make a motion if you get the second, then further discussion before we vote? That's how it works. Right?
I'm happy to make the motion that we postpone the vote until the 28th and we continue to research as a committee.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor to postpone the vote till the 28th. Is there a second? So seeing and hearing, no second, we can continue the discussion on the face covering issue. So Mrs. Forbes.
I would actually like to make a motion that we vote on this. And the motion is I would like to see the mandate lifted. I will discuss why when we get to the discussion if there's a second to my motion.
I'll second that motion.
So the motion was what again?
That we follow the recommendations of Desi and the guidelines that they have set forth for us and have masks become optional on February 28th in the Oxford Public Schools.
And.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. Motion, a second, discussion.
Okay. So if I can just discuss my reasons for that, we have been following the Desi guidelines since the beginning. We didn't really have the option of making other decisions based on their recommendations. I feel that they have looked into this. This variant of COVID is contagious absolutely, but I think it's much more mild than what we've seen. It has spread fast through our town. We have had a ton of students, faculty, and community members, but that's who I'm here for. And when 80% of the people, and you know, 1,279 is a, is a pretty good representation. We don't get a ton of.
Absolutely.
We really don't. Our, no offense, but our surveys don't get this kind of response. These people feel very, very strongly. And I feel that if parents want their children to be masked, they can absolutely do that with no repercussion and no judgment. And every family needs to make the decisions that are best for them. We are pushing two years of all of the things we can cite, children not seeing facial expressions, parents feeling that their children are breathing in carbon dioxide. I mean, I could go on and on. But I do feel that we are an elected body. We're elected by the people who filled out this survey for the most part. We need to do what Desi says and continue to follow their recommendations based on the fact that A, they govern us, but also I am confident that they have done the research and they feel that this is an okay decision. Leaving it up to us just took the ball out of their court. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I, you know, to revisit before the other motion was made, I personally think that I'm not, you know, I'm not against giving all constituents freedom. I think freedom's very important. I think parents should have the right to either mask or unmask their children. However, I think that this district needs to be very prudent and cautious and have things in place, mitigation things that hold us accountable, to be transparent with parents. And one thing that's very concerning to me in this community is at times, things are not transparent. And I don't have the data that you might have or the Department of Public Health might have at their disposal instantaneously. And I feel like there has to be some type of a little bit of an alarm given to parents. So they're very well aware they need to have a mask today if they have an immune compromised child, or they have a child that has asthma, or if they have a large family, or whatever. We all know that there's different reasons why we feel, I feel more comfortable some days wearing a mask and other places not. But if we don't inform our families by having a policy that holds the people in this district responsible for telling our constituents, our families, our parents, and other community members that might be entering and exiting our building, that it's not a safe, potentially safe space, then we are leaving our children vulnerable. And that's the only point I'm trying to make tonight. So many communities have been very thoughtful and they are trying to put some layers in their policy that just state that masking should be recommended at certain times. Again, parents can either choose or not, but their policy is stating specific things. If you're traveling, if you're doing this, I know MASC put out those three bullets. Other communities are adding more. I think we should do our homework. I'm not saying that we don't move forward and say to parents that we're going to lift the mask, but I think it's very important that we are going to rewrite our policy and put other things in there because I don't want to be a parent that finds out a week or two later that my child's class blew up and I got the information a little bit too late because it was through word of mouth well after exposure to my child. And then I lose a child or somebody else loses a child. I don't want blood on my hands. That's all I'm saying. I really care passionately to keep people safe.
Mrs. Forbes.
So I don't disagree.
Yeah.
On some level. How difficult would it be for us to notify? I mean, we get an email every day from certain schools. Not lately, but how difficult is that to put on the schools to notify the kindergarten class?
Right.
Comma, comma, viruses are often contagious prior to symptoms. So I think sometimes you're here and you're sick because your parents gave you a little Tylenol and said you'll be fine. Technically, you actually have COVID and you just don't have symptoms yet that we're aware of. So that makes it a little skewed as far as I'm concerned. But where we are already getting the updates, is it possible to, and I don't want a big, long policy like this. I just really don't. I would honestly like to see the policy go away and follow the recommendations set forth by Desi. But I, I do appreciate that we need to notify families, not just of immunocompromised students or faculty, but, so that's my question.
So in this, to speak to, to that, we, we have no problem if there was a three or more, but the problem is one parent might say, you know, how come she got that notification and we didn't get notified that? So it's, you know, maybe if there's three or more in a classroom in a seven-day period, you know, the, the parents will get notified. But the notification should really be just a, hey, heads up, there was some COVID and, you know, and this, this many students in this period of time, and if you would like to mask, you know, you can have your child masked.
There are, there are districts that are peeling away from that too. Like in my own district, we're after the vacation.
Right. Well.
We're not even sending letters home.
People are getting desensitized and not even reading the letters.
So we got, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. What we have though, what we need, so part of this discussion is we do currently have a policy in place that we're going to have to amend. Or we're going to have to either amend it or we're going to have to eliminate it. But we do have a policy currently that is in our policy manual. It's EBCFA face coverings. So we do need, I know there's a motion on the floor to, in, in a second to adopt Desi language, but I think we need to formalize a little bit more. And that's why when I read you the E, the MSAC guidance, I think that's a good place to start. To Mrs. Griffin's point, some people have added more. Like you heard me say, I wanted to strike one thing and add something. I think if we get the basic language in there, then we can certainly look at it and make adjustments as needed. But we do have to get, if we are going to vote, the motion that's on the floor, we do have to get rid of the first.
I was just, I was just going to amend my motion actually to get rid of the first policy. So I would like to make a motion that we follow the recommendations of Desi effective February 28th. Oxford Public Schools will make masking optional for all students and staff. And I would like to rescind policy EBCFA in its entirety.
Could I ask you to just do separate? Could we just do the, could you, just, could you just strike the current policy we have and make a motion on that? And let's, can we just eliminate that and then we can?
You want this first? Get rid of the?
To strike the current policy we have. If you would like to make a motion to remove the current policy, EBCFA face coverings.
You got it. I would like to make a motion to rescind our face covering policy, EBCFA.
As written in the meeting.
As written, yeah.
As written in the current policy.
Yes.
I believe you're going to have to say as of February 28th.
As of February 28th.
As of February 28th.
And I will second that.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. See, seeing and hearing, no discussion, a vote. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So five yes, no, zero nos. The EBCFA current face coverings will no longer exist in our policy manual effective February 28th. Now, we do need a motion to adopt a policy. So just to say, in my opinion, just to say we're going to adopt Desi's language, we, we need to have something more formal to Mrs. Griffin's point in writing.
If I can just speak to that, I feel like we're setting ourselves up too. I think that when we don't send that letter, someone doesn't get that email. I, I.
This has nothing to do with emails. I'm not talking anything about emails. I'm talking about the language that I read a little bit ago that we forwarded.
Mrs. Griffin's or MASC's?
MASC's.
Okay. You just said Mrs. Griffin's. That's why I was confused.
No, no, no. I said the, I said to Mrs. Griffin's point, we need something formal in a policy. Yes.
Do we still have a motion and second? Does Mrs. Forbes want to rescind her motion?
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second on the initial.
I don't want to rescind.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Wait a minute.
I do have some discussion. So what is, what are we, where is this going to be captured that we can fall back on? Where are we capturing it? Because we're going to make a motion and accept it or not, but where are we going to capture this when we have to say, well, our policy says you have to do this. Our policy says you need to do that.
No, what I'm saying is that we're following Desi guidelines and we're saying masks are optional. Period. That was my motion.
Right. So Desi guidelines says after consulting with medical experts, da-da-da, effective Monday, the 28th, mask requirements will be lifted statewide, the Commonwealth's high vaccination rates, and availability of COVID testing. Okay, masking continues to be required on all buses per order, but it doesn't really talk about the five-day, the masks on in nurses' offices. Is that why if we just capture all that language just in a quick bullet policy, which MSAC has captured, we just add what we need in it? I think we just need to add the 28th language. That's really all we need and strike that one thing I talked about. But we have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll, we still are in discussion.
So I will amend my motion since we're here. I will amend my motion to follow Desi guidelines effective February 28th, make masking optional for all students and staff in the Oxford Public Schools while taking the recommendations of MASC and putting some policy in place as to traveling, as to post-COVID. But no, I'm not going, I'm not going to rescind.
I think you guys are all putting the cart in front of the horse. That's why I was saying.
No.
With all due respect, that it would be prudent for us to sit down. We have a policy subcommittee meeting coming up this week. We can vet different types of policies for, you know, things to bring back in front of the board where we could talk about face coverings.
So we have a policy committee meeting this week?
We do.
What day?
I think it's Thursday. Correct me if I'm wrong, Helen. Yep.
All right. So then, Mrs. Forbes.
And then we have another meeting on the 28th.
Okay. So, so if the motion is to adhere to the state's current guidelines and guidance of optional masks on February 28th, we can take that vote seeing we do have a policy committee meeting. We can hammer out this policy, bring it back to the board on Monday and go from there. So.
Right.
I didn't realize that we were meeting prior. I thought we should do it tonight, but it makes sense. So could you, your motion again was your, back probably to your original motion, right?
Back to my original motion.
Did we have to rescind the last one?
I think I just repeated it the same a moment ago. Helen, is that correct?
What are we at now, Helen?
On off, on off, on off.
The first motion that you made a while back was to lift the mandate, follow the recommendations of Desi's guidelines with masks being optional at Oxford Public Schools. Your amended motion that you just made is to follow Desi guidelines effective 2/28, making masks optional at Oxford Public Schools while taking the recommendation of masks and putting a policy in place as to travel and post-COVID.
Okay. Nope. If I can rescind all of the above. I just want to be clear.
Do you rescind the vote motion?
I am.
Yes.
Yep. So to be.
Mr. Burke, want to rescind?
I'll guess I'll rescind my two seconds.
Thank you.
That's four.
This will be the last time, I promise.
Well, we're going for the record of most rescinding tonight.
All right. So I would like to make a motion that we follow the Desi guidelines, that we lift the mask mandate for all Oxford Public School staff and students effective February 28th. Period.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. A motion, a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
I want to say yes. I just, I want, I want us to get a policy in place.
What's your vote on this motion?
So it should just lift masks for clear precaution.
Effective the 28th. Make them optional.
Making them optional.
Making them optional. So we have a yes, a yes. We're on you. Want to come back to you?
Well, I want to say yes with a condition.
That's not the motion.
It's not the motion.
I know.
Sorry.
I say yes.
All right. Yes, yes, yes. Five yes, no zeros. Motion passes. We will discuss the recommendation from MASC and come back with a face covering policy that will look very much like the motion that we just approved, or at least the discussion will be, and we'll bring something back.
I think we just, again, like, nobody wants to make anybody masked. That, I want to give everybody their freedom, you know? But I also want to have it clearly stated, like, when they go into the health office, put a mask on because it's smart, right?
Right. And we'll get, we're going to, we'll have all that, we'll have all that language, we'll have all that language in a policy for the next meeting.
For the 28th.
For the 28th. Yep.
And if there's any recommendations from anybody in the community, anybody at all, please, you know, send them. I don't know if you could put a.
Yeah, they can send it to me. It's fine. I can send out a communication.
Yeah. I know. I think I shared with you, another community put out.
Yep.
A survey that just said, quick, Lurb, if you have something that you want to go in policy, specific language, or any recommendations, they could be brought up a policy subcommittee.
All right. Superintendent will send that out. Thank you, Mrs. Grenad. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Mrs. Grenad.
Thanks.
All right. Mr. Lucas, waiver request to Desi commissioner. Can you give us a quick update, background on that before we take a vote?
Yes. The letter is included in your packet. Obviously Barton lost a day of school due to the bathroom fire. Barton already exceeds the minimum time on learning requirement by 90 hours. Ideally, if the commissioner of education approved this waiver, it would allow all of our students to finish school on the same day. Historically, the commissioner does not grant these waivers, but we wanted to try to keep the kids, you know, on schedule with their brothers and sisters and siblings. If the commissioner does happen to agree, Barton staff by contract still has one workday. And Mrs. Trainer and I would come up with some good PD for them to contribute to make up for that workday. But really, so the, really the request is for the kids to not have to do an additional day of school.
But the staff would.
And they could end on the same last day as everybody else.
I think it's a great idea.
That's the goal.
I will make a motion to.
We have a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing, on call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Five yes, zero nos.
Excellent. Thank you.
Draft calendar. Do we have the energy to do this? Do we want to, do we have a heavy agenda for the 28th?
No.
I think we do have a lot on the 28th already. We have a lot. Yeah.
Power. Power to.
I can be, I can be quick.
Do it.
I can be quick.
Clearly, people care about the calendar. They all.
Right.
Right.
Uh, the results, this is draft number six. This is of the school year calendar. Results of the survey are included and reflected in this packet that we sent out to our community. The draft reflects the results of that survey and so basically this draft of the, of the calendar has school starting on Tuesday, August 30th. We would have half days before Thanksgiving and winter vacation. We would have a full day of school on Good Friday. And I'll open it up for any discussion. We did have multiple parents ask why the PD days were on Tuesdays. We're doing that because those are election days and we're trying to keep folks out of the schools on those days. We thought it'd be a nice spot. Tuesday is a little wonky because it's in the middle of the week, but we're really trying to, to make it as positive as we can, so.
Mr. Burke?
So just to keep things moving, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the school day calendar as proposed by the Superintendent and then we can.
I'm going to second that motion.
And we can have discussion.
All right, any discussion? We have a motion and a second discussion. I do have a couple of questions. Mr. Lucas, what, what, I know you had some vision. Are you getting your vision in this calendar?
Not completely because we were hoping to start a little bit earlier, but hearing how many parents and families travel in late August and concern, I'm willing to, to go with this for now. This is fine. It's okay. We're still starting one day earlier than we did the previous year, so it's, it's progress.
Can you just, for the people still here, just what was the, the reasoning behind wanting to start earlier so people know that when this comeback comes back up again with next year's calendar, they have a good understanding of what you're looking to do?
The hope was to get out a little bit earlier in June, gets hot, kids get tired, our MCAS testing is done, our state, our AP testing is done for the high school kids. Really, the further you go into June, the idea was to get, you know, where people are, kids are enthusiastic and staff in August, start a little bit earlier and just feel that those days were more valuable in August than June. But it depends on who you talk to, so that was our hope.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And how many half, there are two half days in the whole calendar?
Uh, there are, I believe there are three. Thanksgiving, before winter break, and the last day of school.
So what, so the two half days, the one before Thanksgiving and Christmas, what is the staff requirement on that day? Is that a full day for staff?
Not typically. We typically let them go once the kids are gone or soon after, an hour after the kids are gone. They wrap up, close up their classrooms and then leave after that.
So then technically they're only working 179 days? Based on their contract, should be 180 days?
Correct. Correct.
I don't know. Thoughts from anybody on that?
I think maybe that can be discussed during negotiations, but I also think that just for the sake of approving the calendar, we just discuss the fact that half day or not half day and leave the, if it's a full day for teachers or whatever, at, at the table with negotiations. But I think it's a good idea to have a half day personally because for so many reasons,
does this, sorry, today's point, does this indicate what the option is for staff or is this just a student calendar? So the half day before the winter break, we haven't had before, right?
We just had it this year. We have.
Did we?
Yeah, we have had it several times.
All right, I'm confusing my own district then, okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Some do, some do not.
So whether or not that could be a required full day for staff and not for students is still something we can talk about in negotiations.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Families, I think it, it makes sense.
Yeah, any other.
Whatever they want.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. There is, again, some question about the two half days, what's the staff requirement? But we have a motion and a second, call for the vote on the approval of calendar. Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, five yess.
Thank you.
Prepare us to Barton?
I'll, I'll be quick. The Barton rooms have completely been cleaned out. Staff has been amazing, adjusting with classrooms. We have two in the library. We combined our pre-K classroom, we walked through them today. Teachers and staff are doing great in all the rooms. For those classrooms that were damaged by the flood at Barton, we have to have some wall repair and the tiles, the tiles have been ordered. When those come in, they should be installed, the walls will be repaired. There is a huge delay in cab, in the cabinets because of COVID, so we're going to move, once the flooring and the walls are repaired, we're going to move our students back in there. We'll do the cabinets later, probably April vacation or even if we have to leave in the summer. Staff is in agreement, we don't have to have the cabinets right now to teach the kids and make it a positive learning environment. So that's the hope at Barton. The fire, the fire in the bathroom is still being repaired. It looks great. We're just waiting for the repair on the stalls itself. At the high school, they're still undergoing cleaning in the teacher's room, lunchroom, girls' bathroom by the gym and the main office. Staff has been very flexible. Fortunately, we didn't lose any classrooms, so it did not impact students as much as the Barton incidences did. The rug is being pulled up now in the main office. Staff has been relocated, very flexible. Everybody's adjusting very well. So that's where we're at with those two. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the Superintendent regarding the two building repairs?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mike.
All right, great.
Superintendent Gold's update.
Yes, I'll just kind of hit the highlights. You guys have a copy of this in your packet in detail. District Learning Recovery Plan is well underway and is positively impacting our student learning. Continuing to interview stakeholders, review documents with administration team and collect evidence for a completed entry plan that I will share with you guys in June. Looking to identify areas of strength here in Oxford and opportunities for growth. And then that will serve with our administration team. This summer, one of our projects is going to be creating a new three-year district improvement plan. So all of this work this year will inform that. I'm still participating actively in the new superintendent induction program. We just had two more sessions last week, which were terrific. I speak to my superintendent coach weekly. Continuing to build relationships with all stakeholders in Oxford and attend school events whenever possible. Have had several opportunities to do learning walks with our principals and classrooms and also as a central office and our administration team, and those will continue through the rest of the year. So we just walked through the high school on Friday, today we did Barton, so it's been terrific. Wednesday is an entire team, we're going through Chafee. Staff's doing a great job. Happy to discuss any of those progress on goals with you or answer any questions.
Any questions for the Superintendent on his goals updates?
There's more in the document in your packet, but I just wanted to, to take the time, kind of hit the highlights.
Yeah, maybe we can put a part on the agenda next, next meeting if anybody has any follow-up questions on the goals. People might have time to review it.
Looks good.
I think this is an excellent start. I'm, I'm thrilled to see what I'm seeing. I do, I, I brought it up before through the chair that I'd love an update on curriculum and essential grants and our PD.
Yes.
You know, what our, what our Title II A grant is.
Yeah, I think it's on the next. I think it's on the next meeting.
Next agenda?
Yeah.
So I think it's coming, but.
And Justin Ledoux is going to join us too for, for a budget update.
That sounds excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, you got it. Thank you.
Personnel update, Mike?
There are none at this time.
Great, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, subcommittees, any updates? I know Hal's got a bunch of policies here, so any, any updates from the personnel negotiations? Corey, September?
We are underway. We will have, is it next meeting, Helen, we'll have a vote on the.
Yes.
Help me.
Ground rules?
No, the, the union that we did finish negotiations with.
Custodians.
Been a long night. Custodial union, correct?
Yes, we have a side letter prepared that will be addressed in executive session as well as discussion with the school committee members on funding or negotiating.
Yep. All right, thank you. On that, school safety, nothing other than the fact that we do have the emergency guide. Is this just for us to review or look at?
It is just to review, it was finalized. It's wonderful input from our police department, fire department, DPW. A lot of teamwork went into that and I believe at this point, every teacher in the district has one on their desk.
Excellent. Thank you. And maybe that's something we can add to the, you know, just a bullet on the agenda next time if anyone has any questions after reviewing that. That's great, thank you.
Yeah, happy to answer any questions on that if you just go through it.
Yeah, district accountability and curriculum, Hal and Corey, anything?
No, I, again, probably, and I'm thinking in another month or so, we, we convene and we'd be looking at that data that is coming in from Amy.
Yep.
So eloquently put it in her update here. I'm trying to remember, is it I station?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's some data on that and I would like, that's one thing I'd like to see. I'm sure you folks have more.
Yeah, we would like to have another one in March, if that's, that'd be great.
That would be terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you on that. And then diversity, equity and inclusion, September, anything?
Of course.
Molly?
Every other meeting, of course. Well, Molly wasn't there, so I have to speak for us as usual. I do, no, I mean, I do all the talking, that's all.
Oh, all right.
I didn't mean anything other than that. So we had a really.
If she can't make it, I'd love to go to one invite. I would love to be a.
Second Wednesday of every month.
Well, just text me if you don't have anybody.
I just learned how to do a Google invite. You got it.
If you can't make it, Molly, text me.
I did literally last week.
All right, quick update.
So yes, we had Amy Grenette here as a guest speaker talking about the mental health situation overall, obviously nothing specific of our students and the impact that they're seeing with number of students coming to the nurses' office. Obviously, some concerns legit, some may be manifesting in your mind and, and they need to just be talked to a little bit. Sounds like the nurses are all on the same page, all on board. Certainly, mental health is huge for us. We do have the anonymous alert, which we talked a little bit about, just that if a student or a staff member or a parent has a concern, we do have that hotline they can call that is looked at within 24 hours. And then we also had Brittany Murphy, who is the bright room coordinator for the middle school and the high school, who came in to really explain to us what it is and brought pamphlets for all of us to take home, so we all left a little bit more informed. And that was it. We had a really small meeting and I will say publicly, we made a motion to accept minutes. We didn't have a quorum. Chairman messed that up, so we will have to redo that vote. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you for your transparency and your update. Appreciate that. All right, Mrs. Griffin, I know we have.
Lots of fiscal.
Lot of policies to vote on.
Lots of fiscal policies to review this evening, so I'd love to waive a reading if possible.
So good, yep. Need a motion for that?
I'm going to make a motion that we waive the following policies.
Well, waive the first.
Waive the first reading.
Waive the second reading.
Second reading, yeah. I'm going to go through the, right now, what they all are. So we have DA fiscal management goals and you can see we had this goal before, but everything that is in red has been taken out and the new language was the suggested language from MASC. So this was very revision. We're putting that forth this evening for you. And then we have policy DB annual budget, and this is just the procedure for setting a budget, which is something that we've always done. But we did make this in line with MASC. Obviously, they have a great team that goes through everything to make sure that policies are tip-top. And then we have policy DBC, budget deadlines and schedules. And this is new, I believe.
It is, yeah.
For us. Again, we've always had our own budget line and, uh, budget deadlines and schedules that we've adhered to, but this is, you know, formally memorializing that. And then we have policy DBD, budget planning. Again, we've been doing this for a very long time too, but this is putting it into a policy. We have policy DBG, budget adoption and procedures. Again, this is to formalize that process. And we have policy DBJ, budget transfer authority. And this is a new policy as well, that budget transfer authority. Policy DD, funding proposals and applications, also another new policy. All of these have been recommended by MASC again. We have policy DEC, federal funds supplement, not supplement policy. Again, that is something that was not in our handbook, but now is. And then this is an old policy that we have updated. It's DGA and it was called approval of warrants and now it's authorized signature. And it's just a procedure that we have been following for quite some time with signing warrants. And then we have one more, I believe.
Two more.
Or two more. More than two more, sorry. DH, bonded employees and officers. We've been bonding people for a very long time, but this is just to make sure that we're continuing to do that and now we have a memorialized policy for that. We have policy DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. Again, that's a recommended, recommended budget policy. And this one's one of my favorites, DIE audits. I don't know whoever made those letters, they had a sense of humor. We've had that in place before, but this has been updated to be more detailed. And, oh my goodness, we just keep going here. Policy DJA, purchasing authority. That was something that we did not have, but we do now if we approve it. And then policy DJE, procurement requirements. Policy DK, payment procedures. And that is it. Now, we have had a policy manual that we have had, that Justin put together several years back. He did an amazing job doing that for us and we've been using that for an extensive amount of time. But this just puts it in our handbook and really now we have it in our manual and we also have it in that handbook after this is approved.
Was there a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah.
The second reading.
Yeah, she made a motion to waive the second reading on those 15 policies. Yeah, she made a motion to waive the second reading on those 15 policies. Is there a second?
There is a second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing and hearing on call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I'm a yes, five, five yes, zero noes. Warrant report, Mrs. Griffin, you're still on.
Yes, so I have a warrant report for this evening, February 14th, 2022, an accounts payable warrant that was signed February 1st, 2022, for $246,564.34. A payroll warrant dated February 3rd, 2022, for $674,858.63. An accounts payable warrant dated February 8th, 2022, for $46,975.40. And an accounts payable warrant dated February 15th, 2022, for $138,326.44. And that is it.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin.
You're welcome.
Members forum, start with you, Ms. Raymond. Is there anything that you want to say that you didn't capture earlier? No? Okay, Ms. Cook?
I appreciate everyone's like efforts with the mask mandates. I hope this is good for all of us moving forward, and I appreciate the special presentation for Mr. Lucas and the building principals.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cook. Mrs. Forbes?
Just a few things. I'm so excited about the garden that they're working on at the middle school. I'm, I'm huge on kids learning where food really comes from, and my daycare used to have gardens, and a farmer who came and taught us that, so I'm thrilled with that. Can't wait to see what the spring brings. Congratulations to the girls' track team. That's awesome, that they're swickled champs for the first time ever. Keep that up. Congratulations for, to Olivia Clarkson as well. I want to thank all of the parents who showed up for the coffee and conversation two weeks ago on a Saturday morning. It's important that we hear from people, and everyone has input that we might not think about, because it may or may not affect us, and we don't hear from everybody all the time. So thank you, and please try to come to all of them. And thank you to the policy committee, because you guys really did a lot of work. I know it's been in the works for a long time, but it is a lot of work. So thank you to you both. That's all for me.
I think of all, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Mrs. Griffin?
Thank you for your patience with me, everybody, this evening, at home and here. I appreciate, again, the policy subcommittee doing all that work, and I appreciate all of you guys bearing with me as I make all these requests for surveys. Just to see that survey go out, if anybody has specific language that they want in a potential base mask policy that's coming our way again. I know that you have alluded, and there's signs up there on that wall, so I know it's kind of semi-public, that there's programs coming down the pike for our students that are some career opportunity.
Yes.
I would love to have us, I don't know when that's hitting an, an agenda.
It's going to happen in our next meeting, where Program of Studies is on the docket for the 28th.
Yeah.
We're planning on doing that to 28.
So I would love-
We'll roll those out and talk about those on the 28th.
I know that there's been kind of some, some rumors floating around about reconfiguration potentially. Nothing's been, you know, formally said. I don't know if there's going to be a subcommittee that's putting, please, to discuss.
We, we have created a survey. Is it okay if I talk to this?
Go ahead, yes.
All right, use me.
We, we have created a survey. We're waiting to send it out till the masks dust settles.
Okay.
We're going to send that out by the end of this week and look for some feedback from parents, caregivers, staff, and students. Very similar to what we do with our mask survey, ask some questions. We will add in some more specific information, kind of by building or grade level for students to see what their opinions are, and throw it out there and talk about, you know, should the eighth grade be moved back to the middle school? So that survey will be coming out by the end of the week.
Okay. And I know that-
And I can share those results with you at the next meeting.
That would be terrific. And I know that there's like some programmatic, I can't even speak, programs that we're putting in place.
Yep.
I don't know if there's space issues or something that-
If the eighth grade moves to the middle school, and that'll be part of the, the letter that goes out that explains the survey.
Okay.
It will allow for space for three of those programs for our high school kids. So that's part of that, and it's all connected. And I'll talk about all of that with the communication with the survey, too. They'll explain a lot of that.
All right.
So it's something that's been mentioned, you know, go back to my entry plan in July and August. A lot, I've interviewed a lot of people, parents, students, staff, and it has come up in almost every conversation. I have, I have personally overwhelmingly heard a lot of people suggest that we should move the eighth grade back, but we'll see what the survey says, too.
Now, can I-
I'm interested to get the students' opinions, too.
Can I put one thing out there?
Sure.
It could get shot down, but I would love to know if there's an appetite in our community to have like a full-day preschool program, and how many potential community members would consider enrolling their children. I know a lot of communities put out, like, if you're going to register your child for kindergarten.
Right.
And by the way, please, if you're out there and you think your child's coming to kindergarten, you know, don't, don't pause, tell our school as soon as possible, because it helps us make our decision for budget. But it would be great to know, if, if there's that appetite.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that in March. I'd like to get, next get through the eighth grade-
Okay.
-for this community. I just want to focus on one thing at a time, and see if this community really wants us to move the eighth grade back to the middle school, but happy to tackle that in March, too.
That'd be great. That's all. Thank you.
All right, before, before Mr. Burke goes, just on that survey, what, 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 what range of ages are you looking to survey? Like, are you just going to do the-
We were, we were-
Sixth, seventh now, or you're going to do the-
We were going to offer it to the students currently at the middle school and the high school.
Okay.
We were going to give it out to all staff members, K through 12, and all parents and caregivers, K through 12, was kind of our thinking, what we were going to do.
Yeah, good, because I know-
That was our hope.
Yeah, because I know like Molly's class came here, and I think the class before her was the first one.
Right.
Getting some feedback from the current seniors.
We'd love to have some alumni, too.
Well, this, I think it was only one class-
Yeah.
-before hers, but yeah, that'd be great. Okay.
Mr. Burke? I want to give a shout out to Helen for keeping up with us tonight. Keeping us straight, thanks, huh? Question for you, Mike, are you going to, I'm, I'm not a Facebook guy, I'm sure it's already on there, but are you going to communicate to families tomorrow, the results of this vote tonight?
I can do that.
For transparency's sake.
Yes, I'll do that.
And I had a nice conversation with Kaylee Olson from Oxford Public Access this evening, before we started our meeting, and just want to put it on your radar, Mike, if we can look into ways to continue to stream these meetings for people who don't have cable.
Okay.
I know there's a large number of people who-
Yeah.
-do not have cable anymore, that there's so many-
Okay.
-other ways to watch TV that they can't see the meeting.
We'll, we'll give you an update on the 28th on that, too.
Yep, appreciate it.
Sound good?
Absolutely.
Do you add that, too, Helen? Thanks. Okay, thank you.
All right, just real quick, you know, September always does a great job of capture. Congrats to the track, congrats, and thanks to the parents who came out a couple Saturdays ago. We'll do some more of those coffee and conversations, and hopefully that will grow. I do want to give a shout out, I know Mr. Nugent said it quickly, but the first time the color guard was at the Worcester Railers hockey game at the DCU Center this past weekend, and the color guard was obviously done by our NJRO TC unit, so great job to Abby, Hannah, Emma, Summer, Alexa, and they were commanded by Lily, so great job to all of you. I do want to give a shout out to Olivia Clarkson. I know it's been said a couple of times, when Olivia was a seventh grader and I was the principal at Oxford Middle School, I remember saying to her at the end of the year, I was just so proud of her leadership and her commitment to stick with that team. She was a skilled player, and the team wasn't that good last, that year in seventh grade. I think, I think we won a game, maybe two.
Maybe.
But she just stuck with it, and she kept positive, and if anyone's watched this young lady play, she's, her motor is like 100 all the time. And I just, it's unfortunate that, you know, you remember players sometimes, because they go up in the banner for 1,000 points. Olivia's going to fall a little bit short, you know, missing a whole season last year is going to do that to her, but I just want to give her a shout out. She is truly one of the hardest-working players I have seen since I've been up here. She gives it her all on the floor. Each and every day she plays, her body, she, her body's flailed all over the floor. Hustle, 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 and her leadership, I have two daughters on the team, and I've seen her leadership, and it was contagious, and the girls really jelled this year. And I projected to win many games. I think they're up to seven, hopefully eight today. So I just want to give a shout out to Olivia. Even though you might fall short of 1,000, you will always, always be remembered as a very, very quality basketball player, but also a very, very good person and student. So congrats, Olivia, best of luck. I do, you know, Mrs. Rice brought up the bathroom thing earlier. I am going to ask through the Superintendent that we look into what's going on up here. I think with the addition of a dean of students, with the camera infrastructure we have, with potential to do electronic sign-outs, I don't know what we do up here. There's so much technology you can use that we can manage. I understand there's been vandalism, but at some point we have to reopen and reallow and, and, and give kids an opportunity to do it better. I mean, we're penalizing a population of students potentially when it's a smaller percent that's causing the issue. So I really, really hope that the Superintendent and the, and the principal can work on that, and I'm very, very anxious to see what you guys come up with. But I really feel, you know, her, her, her opinions, you know, it's, as a principal myself, it's a hard battle to say you can't go to the bathroom, or we're locking bathrooms, like, we just don't want to go down that road. I get the original premise for doing it, but I think now with the infrastructure in place and the capacity with the new staff member to supervise as the dean of students, I think we need to revisit that. I believe that is it for me. Public comment, final public comment. I am going to open the floor for public comment. All right, I'm going to close the floor for public comment. Any future business topics for agendas, please get to me or email the Superintendent by Tuesday before, Tuesday before our next meeting, which is the week before. I don't even know if that made sense. You know what I mean?
By next Tuesday.
Yeah, by next Tuesday.
There you go.
Our next regular meeting will be Monday, February 28th, and I, we do need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion, and do we have a second? Second by Molly, call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yeah.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
I am a yes. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.